We're live.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to the Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four. At Lennox and Addington County Council meeting. This meeting is being held virtually by Zoom, but all normal policies and procedures apply as though it were a live and in-person meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular monthly meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Deputy Warden Townend and Counselor Fritsch, any discussion? All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. And a motion to adopt the minutes of the inaugural meeting from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Counselor Hogg and Counselor Calver, any discussion? All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Davison, Counselor Richardson, all in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature of that interest? None declared. First item is the Warden's report. You have a motion to receive the Warden's report for January two thousand and twenty four, Counselor Hogg. Counselor Fritsch, I apologize, it's rather thin. I had a quite a bout of pneumonia and could not attend the inaugural meeting of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, which was doubly unfortunate because it was held at our county building this time. I can assure you, I read all the material for the meeting and Brenda tells me that the meeting consisted mostly of people simply reading reports, so I don't think I missed a whole lot, but I'll hope to be healthy for the next one. Delegations and presentations by the Lennox and Addington County General Hospital Foundation. Kelly Rowntree and Amanda Clark of the foundation are going to give us a presentation regarding their campaign to purchase an MRI machine. Kelly or Amanda, whichever of you is going to step up to the plate, the floor is yours.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, your worshiping council. I'm just going to share my screen here for presentation. When you can see that on your screen? Wonderful. Okay. So for close to thirty years, the Lennox and Addington County General Hospital Foundation has been raising funds to help ensure a healthy and stronger community. We're a dedicated, or sorry, we're an independent charitable organization governed by a dedicated group of volunteers, and they all just happen to be our neighbors and friends. And while the Ontario Ministry of Health and Long Term Care offers some support for basic healthcare needs, it doesn't fully cover the cost of new medical equipment and security upgrades. But that's where we step in. Every year, we provide funding to the hospital for essential medical equipment, services and capital improvements, all with the goal of keeping healthcare close to home. My name is Amanda Chalk. I am the coordinator of communications, events and major gifts with the Lennox and Addington County General Hospital Foundation. I am here today along with Kelly Rowntree, our Chair of the Board of Directors, to share with you today the news that are the news that the Lennox and Addington County General Hospital has been approved for our very first magnetic residence imaging machine, making us one of the smallest communities in Ontario with this technology. You may be asking yourself now, what is an MRI? So by simple definition, it's a technology that utilizes a powerful magnet radio waves in a computer to create detailed pictures of a person's anatomy. Access to a local MRI machine in a community hospital has always been a desire by the physicians of LACGH in the surrounding area. Due to the astronomical cost of the acquisition and the specialized space required, it seemed like an out of reach dream for our hospital. Even with the ability to purchase in-house an MRI, the annual operating costs are staggering. There are no technical fees associated with the MRI imaging. Therefore, acquiring funding is essential to an organization pursuing the ownership and operation of an MRI. As for determining the need for an MRI, that was a simple decision. Geographically, we are located in the center of a region with a high demand for MRI services. There are presently over seven thousand five hundred MRI priority four patient requisitions waiting to be booked for an appointment in our region alone. A priority four scan is the lowest priority with scan rating. It's required, but not urgent. These scans by provincial standard should be completed within twenty eight days. The present wait time in our region is now over twenty four months. In December, two thousand and twenty one, the Ontario Ministry of Health and Long Term Care put out an invitation to all hospitals to request operational hours for new MRI. The criteria was that the hospital must absorb the cost purchasing the machine as well as the cost associated for construction. LACGH was in a strong position where it had available space to create an exceptional MRI layout that supported optimal patient flow and a fully trained radiologist group that saw how they could provide superior healthcare to their immediate community and surrounding region. A business plan was developed and LACGH was successful in receiving operational hours with the Ontario government investing over one million dollars in support. This made what was previously an unattainable goal now within our reach. The former Lamedco facility at three ten Bridge Street West will be an expansion of the Diagnostic Imaging Department and will be a home to the MRI machines and the clinics for bone mineral density and mammography, designating this facility as a second hospital in Lennox and Addington. In order to fund the new MRI machine and renovations required to facilitate it, we have a mandate to raise three and a half million dollars to turn this vision into reality. And that's where your support truly shines. We rely on the kindness and generosity of people like you to help us finance vital equipment and capital projects that invest in the future of our community's care. Today, we are asking the County of Lennox and Addington for a contribution of one million dollars to help support the purchase of the MRI to ensure a healthier and stronger community. We are truly grateful for the support the County of Lennox and Addington has provided to our hospital over the years and investing in the care of our community, our loved ones and ourselves. Since the inception of our county hospital in nineteen sixty five, the County of Lennox and Addington has contributed over one point five million dollars in support with the most recent contribution of five hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and eight towards the hospital's X-ray and diagnostic imaging expansion. We are very appreciative of the continued support of the County of Lennox and Addington and our community partners who help to keep healthcare close to home. In conclusion, I'd like to share a brief video showing what healthcare close to home truly means to our community. I'm hoping this is going to play okay. We've had a couple of issues with the connection, but please let me know if you can hear this okay.
Coming into a hospital for treatment is terrifying. Lots of tests came through to finally say, yes, it's perfect. And it's a long, slow decline of raised health and nothing we can do except make most of it and address it medically. When you do hear the word cancer, it doesn't feel like it's actually happening to you. And not only a physician in the hospital, I've been a patient in this hospital. I had a choice to go to get my medical care. I chose LACGH.
It's so important to have a hospital that is in a, you know, every day I put myself in, so I have two different stations and I think that I you know, have cancer, I have family up here and getting that support and support that I need from my hospital. They're controlled, they're licensed, they're involved with the law.
Ray thinks a long time lost his smile and a smiling smile. Regardless of where you choose to live, you should have exposure to the best medical care that you can receive.
But when something this large takes over your life and it's not in your control anymore, you really do rely on those doctors to step in and control the situation.
We have developed an amazing culture and that translates into a kind, compassionate, high-quality medical care experience for our patients and for our community.
I'd like to thank you for your consideration. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, any questions or comments on the presentation? Counselor Fritsch?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, my one question is, so what's the timeframe for your fundraising? Like, over what period of time? Number of years or?
So we are looking probably within the next two years to achieve our goal, if not sooner.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Warden. I just want to confirm that the the ask is a million dollars and I would like to thank Counsel Fritz for, he sort of took my next my next question, which was, were you hoping to raise or were hoping a donation from the county would happen for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty four? Or is it something that could be spread over two or three years?
We can definitely. We have pledges that are over a few years. The previous support from the council was fifty thousand dollars over ten, for every year for ten years. So we are definitely, you know, welcome to the support over a period of time.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Calver.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, the cost of this was what, three, three and a half million dollars?
So the total cost, so the cost of the machine itself is around two million, sorry, just over two million, and then the cost for the construction related to it is about one point five.
Okay, and the Ontario government's donated a million dollars towards it?
For operating costs.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so we have to cover the cost of the equipment as well as any construction related.
Okay, is there any other grants or anything available you can get for this?
Um, we are seeking support from other community members as well as grants that are available out there that will support this project.
Okay. No, it's definitely a needed piece of equipment for our area, for sure. Being on the receiving end of waiting for MRIs, it takes a long time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Fritsch?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah. This just brings up another question. So the actual fundraising that is being started now, how does the, I guess, progress in getting, obtaining committed funds or a commitment to specific funds from whatever donors there are? Uh, how does that affect the actual construction schedule or does it, is this going ahead regardless and or is it?
Uh, yes, to answer your question, yes. Like many, many things these days, there's financing involved. So as we raise the funds, there, we will be financing the machine and then paying that that off once we raise the three and a half million.
Okay, so so obviously, if it takes a little while to get, you know, it takes a year or or more or two to raise all the funds, then it's it's not preventing the project from starting. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I'm just wondering, CEO Orchard, is this something we would defer to budget time? Obviously, we're not going to pull a number out of the hat right on the spot here. What would you suggest in terms of of addressing this in the near future?
Yeah, the the timing of this ask in January was on purpose because I did talk to one of the board members in the fall and suggested that it's more appropriate to do it just before the budget process so that council can consider it along with all of its other asks and financial obligations. And so what would be appropriate if council has the appetite to would be to request a staff report and I consider it during the budget process, which takes place in February.
Thank you. Counselor Davison?
Oh, you're muted.
I would move that motion that we accept the report and refer it to budgetary purposes.
So you're asking for a staff report?
Yes, yes.
A second or for that? Counselor Richardson, any further discussion? All in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you very much, Amanda and Kelly. You'll be hearing from us.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Bye now.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, thanks. Okay. Matters for consideration. Development charges. Ah, it's our planner Anna Gelati that's going to address this or Stephen Paul. I'm not sure which of you.
Yeah, I think I'll I'll start and then I'm going to hand it off to Anna and then Chris Wager is actually going to help us with this report as well.
Great, thanks, Stephen.
Yeah, so I'll just, I guess, a little bit of a introduction to the report. So in March of last year, two thousand and twenty three, County Council passed a resolution that was directing staff to prepare a report on implementing development charges similar to that in in other counties. So I apologize it's taken some time to to get back to council with regards to this. During this last few months, we've been working on our our growth study, which is always is an important part of kind of data collection and analysis as you potentially move forward with development charges or other strategic options from a county council perspective. So tonight's report is really provides kind of some logistics and basis of development charges from a county perspective. We do have a recommendation that indicates that County Council can direct staff to include sixty five thousand dollars in the operating budget deliberations. What I'd say, I guess, clarification with regards to that is that I don't necessarily believe that County Council is making a decision tonight on development charges because that is a long, you know, fairly complicated and strategic process that needs to take place. But it's again, it's that baseline information to help with further discussions, either as part of budgetary discussions or additional reports that may come throughout the year as well as we strategically look at development charges and other priorities that council has set aside through our priority session back in in April. So having said that, I will pass it on to Anna, who's going to talk a little bit about kind of the policy side of things and the logistics of development charges for for counties, excuse me. So Anna, it's all yours.
Perfect. Thanks, Stephen. So development charges are fees that are collected by a municipality for new development and redevelopment of land. So it's kind of the principle of growth should pay for growth. And the fees are typically intended to offset costs with increased municipal services and infrastructure due to population growth within the municipality and therefore resulting in new development. So municipalities have the power to pass a development charge bylaw through the Development Charges Act. And the act lays out the process and what types of fees can be collected. So in terms of the process, you're first required to do a development charges background study. There are two main consulting firms in Ontario that do this kind of work. And the study provides kind of an overview of the growth services that are needed to meet demand and a detailed account of capital costs. So it basically identifies eligible services and ineligible services. And then once the study has been completed, a bylaw needs to be passed within a year of the study being done. And there has to be public consultation within that year as well. So there is quite a tight timeline from when kind of the study gets completed to everything getting enacted. And then the list of eligible fees, the entire list was outlined in the report. But as council may or may not remember, Bill twenty three brought some changes to the Development Charges Act. So in my opinion, there were two major changes. So the first was that if if council decides to enact development charges, you need to establish a reserve fund and the municipality is required to spend at least sixty percent of this fund for services related to water, wastewater and highway services. And then the second major change was that housing services and social housing is no longer an eligible service under Development Charges Act. So this includes not-for-profit housing, affordable housing, attainable units and inclusionary zoning units. So none of those are eligible services for development charges anymore. And then, as you'll see in the report, I reached out to counties across Ontario to kind of see where everyone was at with development charges and what other counties were doing in the area. So there seems to be a mix of counties that have implemented development charges, some that have not. And then the kind of within our region seems like a lot of people are kind of in the same boat as us where they're considering it. So they'll probably know within the next year or so. So there's tons of factors to consider. So I'll turn it back over to Stephen to kind of go over some of those those benefits and implications.
Okay, thanks, Anna. Yeah, so in the report, we just really outlined some positives and some challenges that may arise from county development charges. So first thing on the positive side, certainly it's growth paying for growth, as Anna indicated earlier, where we can use or utilize development charges to offset some of the costs and services we provide and are listed in this report. Again, keeping in mind that social housing unfortunately would not be not be part of that. It also, in some instances in some communities, you do hear of kind of negativity in a community whereby maybe taxes have been increased and those increases are a result of growth within a community. So again, growth paying for growth has always been a fairly significant mindset when it comes to looking at instituting development charges. On the the challenges side, and I guess I'll wear my economic development hat a little bit more with regards to that. Development charges firstly on the economic development side could make us less competitive. Many of our competitors, particularly in the region, do not have development charges for industrial. So that's important when we're looking at site selection, negotiations and investment attraction. There is the risk that that could falls behind on the competitive landscape. And then secondly, and probably even more importantly, with regards to the housing crunch and crisis that's in Ontario right now, development charges, I think it's fair to say, will increase the price of homes in a community. Those charges are paid for by the developer or then are then passed along to the buyer of that that new home. So, you know, we're projecting right now that possible five to seven percent increase in the price of a new home if development charges are incorporated on the county side of things. And of course, that's layered with in our communities, both Greater Napanee and Loyals Township, who have development charges right now. So that would be the the challenge of that, both on the economic development side, as well as, of course, on the the need for for housing and the crisis when it comes to the price of housing and the total inventory that's available as well. So having said that, the county is doing some things that somewhat mirror development charges right now, and Chris Wager is going to come online here and speak a little bit about what's happening on his perspective from development on the roadside. So, Chris?
Yes, thanks, Stephen. Through you, Mr. Chair. So when we have a development such as a subdivision come into the area and it has a direct impact on the county roads, such as, you know, a left turn lane or right turn lane or additional street lighting at that development phase, we have the opportunity to ask the developer to pay for site site alterations. So if there is a lot, like I said, like the lighting, the left turn lane, anything like that, which which direct affects the the access to the site or the site itself, we have the developer paying their percentage of the share. So we we look at the road users. And if it's like a left turn lane, that is shared between the the residents and the loan developer. But the developers' increase is forty percent of that. They pay forty percent of the left turn lane. And then we incorporate it into our capital plan when we go to upgrade that road. Alternatively, if it's a a direct lane like into a subdivision or and it's it's fully responsible based on the developer, they'll pay a hundred percent of that cost and intersection improvements. That said, that's that's only a small portion. It doesn't pay for the entire growth. So you know, the entire road network as a whole, if we need an intersection upgrade or we're looking at the tailor kit extension as well as kind of like a bypass or an alternate route to alleviate traffic off of County Road forty one through Napanee. Those costs comes strictly from our tax base currently, which I guess the the other point now is to kind of highlight and inform council that in that strategic planning session last year, included with the development charges, staff were also asked to look at increasing the the capital levy. Currently, it's at two percent and looking at increasing that possibly to three percent and what impacts that's going to have in our our capital plan because essentially we're looking at a development charge or a tax increase or a combination of both to pay for our our network and the level of service that we want to provide to our residents. So there there is some more information. It's not just going to be development charges. We're looking at other options that may mitigate the development charges or lower the impact of them as well as the 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 tax increase as well. I'll turn it back over to you, Stephen.
Okay, thanks, Chris, for that. I guess maybe one other note that I failed to mention as well a little bit earlier. Council had discussions, actually numerous discussions with regards to education development charges over the past two years and just some of the challenges that was communicated with respect to that. Now, it is certainly different in that the the dollars weren't going directly to the county but going to the to the school boards, but just some background information there as well. So I guess to kind of finalize it, as I indicated there at the start of the presentation, there is a recommendation there. That recommend, well, let me take a step back. If council decides that they want to tonight wants to move forward with development charges, then we can put that on to discussion point for the budget at the sixty five thousand dollars. That sixty five thousand dollars would be the first step towards implementation. It's not necessarily about making a decision. Should we or should we not have development charges? It would be about implementation of development charges and following that process that Anna outlined earlier as well. That would be one option. Another option could be, you know, and tied to Chris's comments of looking longer term strategically about how we can look at capital reserves, increasing the levy for road improvements and all things that could be tied to the priorities that council has set up for this term of council. So two different options, I would say ultimately it comes down to the question is what what does council like to do? What would be your preference right now and how can we support you with those decisions moving forward? Having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stephen, Anna and Chris. Questions or comments from council? Yes, Counselor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I know that we're at the initial stages of this. I'm not going to go too deep into the questions. I mean, the decision tonight is just to simply see whether we want to move forward with it. But with respect to the development charges, who is would be responsible for the collection of those should we go down that road?
We would look to the the local municipalities would need to collect on our behalf. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, but we would be looking at all four of local municipalities to be helping with that. And that would be similar process to what's happening right now with the education development charges.
Yeah, that's exactly right, Stephen.
Okay, thank you. The background study, I think we heard this evening that there's two groups that do it. Is so we do, we put this out to one of those two groups or we do in-house as far as the background study just with respect to the sixty five thousand dollars?
We would look to do it in RFP to to secure that that consultant.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, obviously, at least my concerns are is is, and I'll use the word very very loosely, is the taxing of of our local residents and and the the effect on the economic development, especially with respect to residential growth. You know, we don't want to deter that or defer that any any more than we really have to. And that would be my initial concern. Just with respect to Bill twenty three, I see that, and you brought it up, Stephen, is that sixty percent of of each year is to go towards either water or wastewater or surfaces related to highway. I don't believe we at the county level do a lot of work with respect to water or wastewater. Am I correct there?
That is that is correct. So it would be then directly to to Chris and his capital budget with regards to to that. And and I think that's an interesting point as well. And again, tying into Chris's comments about potential, you know, analysis in the future about a levy increase that supports roads and and upgrades. So again, it's kind of weighing those two potential revenue sources in the future.
Yes, and so the sixty percent basically would go directly to to roads or highways and it references services related to a highway. So do we have any idea what those services related to? I guess it's a fairly broad statement that it could be just just about anything. And am I correct there? Or could you give us some examples as to what these services related to highways would be?
I'm going to pass on to Anna.
Yeah, thank you. I they haven't explicitly defined exactly what those services are. It's just right now, it's just broad, general, anything service, but that could change at any time.
And so we're waiting to hear back from the province with respect to more, I guess, a better definition. Am I correct there?
Yeah, Chris might know. Yeah, Chris might know more about this, but I think right now it's just any services related to a highway, and then if people start to get picky, they might make that change. Is that what you've heard, Chris?
Yes, if I can. Through through you, Mr. Chair. In in my discussions with other municipalities, it's primarily used for capital improvements, I guess it's just easier to track and it's larger sums of money. That. Has it has it has a different annual value compared to a like an operational budget where it's year after year with a slight increase. So so the majority of municipalities primarily just just use it for capital. And and didn't even question or or look into using it for operational. It was just the large capital investments that need to be done.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Chris, that and that's all I have, Mr. Ward.
Okay, thank you, councillor Richards. Councillor Calvert.
Through you, your worship. So. So we would be collecting these development charges. Under the municipality as well as collecting for the county, so. Basically, you'd be getting a double dip on type thing, are we, or is that correct?
Yeah, there would be two, yes, two two layers of development charges, so there would be the development charge rate that would be. Approved by the local municipality and the development charge rate that would be approved by county council. Both those would be collected. At time of the development and through the application process and site plan and all that's required on that, and then it would be redistributed back to to the county.
I know, just just like I say, it's just another tax on a tax on, basically. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question then, Stephen, just for clarity. Would development charges apply to any kind of development, including a a single home construction by an individual?
Yeah, what Anna, you can talk a little bit better than I can, yeah.
Yes, any development that requires a building permit because development charges get paid at a building permit.
Okay.
So if you're building a house, you're paying development charges.
And 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 how is it calculated? The percentage of what?
So that's what the background study is for, so the background study determines kind of what the fee, what eligible costs could be included. And then how much demand and how much growth there is going to be, and then they come up with a magical number somehow doing all of their work that they do. And that determines how much or what percentage of development charge the county can ask for or should ask for. And then it would still be up to council discretion if that's the number they want to go with, or if they want to go with a different number if you decide to go that way.
Okay, thank you. So. It brings up a lot of questions, obviously, some of our lower tiers already have development charges and are are more familiar with this. In our municipality, we don't. And the idea that growth pays for growth is, sounds fine on the on the surface. On the other hand, when we're talking as the example Stephen had about education, it's generally understood that everybody. Has a hand in in the education system, whether you have children or not. Or whether your children are still in the system or grown out of it. And and therefore, you can make the argument that that the general tax levy should. Should cover the cost of of growth because. By definition is good for the entire community and will benefit the taxpayers as well. And if you have a development charge, it may discourage growth and so on. I'm sure all these thoughts and and probably more that happen occurred to me. Are running running through the minds of council at the moment, so. I guess. There there's sort of a political and philosophical and economic context to this decision. Would the would the study, this roughly sixty five thousand dollar study, address those sorts of considerations? What would be the scope, I guess, and 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 parameters of this sort of study?
Go ahead, Anna.
Through you, Mr. Chair, so the study, if it would be helpful, I can forward a council a study that's been done by either of these companies. For other counties and municipalities, so you can get a full idea. Of kind of what it is that they'll, what services they'll provide. But essentially, they will cover everything from. What? What is eligible, how much growth, so they'll use our growth study that we just completed or in the process of completing, and they'll look at how much are we growing? Residentially, non-residentially, how much demand is there on our services, where are we at right now? And then kind of compare that, so they'll do a very in-depth background study. But if it would be helpful, I can definitely forward some recent examples in the last year, and then you can take a look at those studies.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. So I guess Stephen. What specifically are you, I I see the, you know, we've got a motion to receive. And and a motion to direct staff to include the sixty five K in our operating budget deliberations for that background study. You want that specific decision tonight because we're moving into budget fairly shortly here, so we do actually have to make a spending study. At this at this current meeting, is that the suggestion?
Yeah, I mean, what I I was thinking and we were thinking that. You know, if council. Approved the recommendation, we could bring back another report. That, you know, answers some of the questions tonight, maybe provides a little bit more. In-depth information to help with that decision going forward as well. I I think it's fair to say that there. There needs to be probably more discussions, more analysis, more strategic, longer-term thinking with regards to this. And we can, in a sense. You know, treat tonight as the the initial conversation point. Build more information to support. A potential decision by council moving forward on an implementation strategy. Or other options that may come from those discussion points and the data that we we present as well. So I think we'd be more than happy to. You know, come back with another report that provides even more information to to help support you and and to help you with. Kind of future thinking with regards to the possibilities that may exist with this or other options that that may exist as well because. Development charges may not be the absolute best tool for us. There may be other things that we're looking at over the next four to five years. That could be a better fit to what's happening in all our municipalities and potential growth options within municipalities. I I don't think development charges are the, is the be all and and end all. I think there's ways to look at it financially and strategically and and forward thinking that, you know, we can start to present to council as well.
Okay, thank you, that 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 sounds like a useful approach. I mean. I I don't know if if. Sort of academics or or. Or consultants or industry groups. Study the sort the sort of thing that I'm getting at is. Are there studies out there that that give examples of how development charges? Have actually affected development in different communities. It's it's difficult, I mean, so many variables here. Do they inhibit development? Do they reduce the tax burden? Do they make any difference at all? I mean, it it would be good to have some some context based on other experience. You know, we we don't have to get sort of deep into like a PhD study or anything like that, but that that's the kind of thing that. That it comes down to, at least for me, is. Long-term benefit. And and impact on on actual growth and and on on on. On existing taxpayers and things like that. So I've got a motion to receive here, what are the wishes of council? Do we want to approve these the spending for for this? Background study in principle and make the decision after receiving more information? Does someone want to craft a motion? To address this one. Yes, councillor Hegedorn.
I would move that we receive the report and adopt the recommendation.
Do I have a second or for that? Councillor Townend, any further discussion? All in favor? Let's carry, thank you very much. Sorry, I was muted. So our next item is the tax increment equivalent grant. This is in regard to our community improvement plan. Stephen, do you want to take take over?
Yes, thank you. So we've had quite a few discussions over the past couple of years on community improvement plans and specifically the tax incremental grant program. So just this past fall, both the town of Greater Napanee and Stone Mills Township. Approved their CIPs and approved their their TIG, their tax incremental or their tax grant program. And having said that, once it was approved and implanted, now had the ability to accept applications from potential applicants. And we have our first applicant, which is from Goodyear, Canada, through the Goodyear. A Napanee project, and you'll see I've indicated some information in this report about. What the possibilities exist for the the Goodyear facility and their expansion plans. And the their request to be included and approved as part of the tax incremental grant program. And we, our county council, again, back in not only November, but also in the springtime. Agreed to partner with both Loyals, or excuse me, Greater Napanee and Stone Mills Township on their CIP and their incremental grant. So what we're asking tonight is for the the Goodyear request to be approved. And for Napanee to support both Stone Mills Township and the town of Greater Napanee. On that application and the potential project moving forward with Goodyear, which, as you know, is located both in Napanee and in Stone Mills Township. So I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to this.
Any questions or comments? Yes, councillor Richardson.
No questions or comments, I just moved the staff recommendation to that point.
Thank you. Do I have a second or for that? Councillor Davison? Any discussion? Oh, yes, councillor Hegedorn.
Thank you. This. I don't know if Stephen Paul have. Comment on this or not. When we were originally looking at the CIPs. The discussion that I recall is for initial development and not expansion. It was to draw new industry in the area and. Help them get in the area and get established through the most critical period of their. Business venture, which typically is the first five years. Different studies have shown. That's sort of the highest risk time to. Succeed or not, and sometimes the cost of the development is a huge factor. I'm not sure, Stephen, if you recall those discussions or not, I'm just looking at it that. The other developments that have come before council have been initial new builds, new development moving into the area. And this one is different in that it's an expansion of existing.
Yeah, well, yes, no, happy to, yeah, probably comment to that. Yeah, typically the CIP and particularly the incremental tax program. It's looking at the assessment changes that would happen on property that's currently. Not being used or not being used to its fullest, so, you know, using an expansion as as an opportunity or as a as an example. You're looking at a pretty large percentage of. The Goodyear location that is vacant land. And now you're turning that vacant land into, you know, potentially hundreds of new jobs and new investment into the area, so. It actually truly is almost equivalent to a new facility, a new growth and new investment that's happening, so it's really helping to. I I would say blunt and or to take a little bit of of the hit off of what that new assessment value is going to be, so when you're looking at. X amount of dollars and X amount of square footage is added to a new facility, or sorry, an existing facility. You're looking at a substantial capital expenditure. That takes place not only on the construction, but what that new assessed value is and what those property taxes are, so again, being able to smooth that out over the. The four to five years is really important to ensure that that investment takes place and. I I guess I'll say as well that when you're looking at expansions, particularly of global companies. It is actually as competitive as attracting a new company to your location. Because companies such as Goodyear, they're competing against other Goodyear locations globally, could be in the US, could be in China. Same could be said for any one of our other global and multinational companies. So being able to provide this opportunity in this savings to. And show that, you know, the community is interested, but also provides that. Better risk or less risk when it comes to what those upfront capital expenditures are really, really important. So sometimes, to make a long story short, I would say sometimes expansions are harder to attract than actual new businesses because of the competitiveness that happens within their own landscape.
Hey. Thank you, Stephen. Anyone else? The councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, I think we also have to keep in mind as well that. We want we want to retain these companies and these organizations within our our communities and. You know, and it may be a poor example, but. You know, if we don't continue to grow, we die. And we don't want to risk losing these 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 organizations and these corporations. That may move somewhere else. Just because they better have, they have more of an opportunity to grow, so I think we got to keep that in mind too with respect to the CIP type of applications.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did I get a mover and second or for this? I did. All in favor then? Let's carry, thank you. Item three is the activation fund. Stephen, I think you're on board again.
I am, one last time here. So as as council may be aware. Council approved in the twenty twenty-three budget, forty thousand dollars. For our naturally LNA activation fund, and that's we're looking at supporting local community groups, partnerships. To, you know, create events, activities, cultural products, you name it, that ultimately makes Leningh Sanctum a better place. So through our Economic Development Coalition, we asked for applications. We received numerous applications, we had a working group that helped us, their volunteer corps from our coalition. Group, and you'll see in front of you tonight. Projects that are looking for county council's approval. We divided the funds up ten thousand dollars per local municipality. Right now, these projects total twenty nine thousand dollars. There's some other projects that we know will be coming. In shortly, and we're going to be looking at reopening the application portal in the springtime. So that we fully use the forty thousand dollars and invest that in into the community as well. But this first slate of candidates is totaling twenty nine thousand dollars, and it's in front of you tonight for your approval, so I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to that.
Thanks, Stephen. Any questions on this one? So we have a motion to receive the report. And a motion that the Naturally LNA Activation Fund application is recommended. Be approved for a total of twenty nine thousand. Can I get a mover? Councillor Townend, councillor Fritsch, all in favor? Let's carry, thank you. Next item is item four, non-union compensation, Director of Human Resources, Trina McGarvey. Go ahead, Trina.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The report before council is a recommendation to support the development of the twenty twenty-four. Budget working papers, along with the supporting data to support or provide rationalization for that recommendation. Having said that, the final decision. In terms of twenty twenty-four budget as it relates to decided will be part of the. Budget process, so this is to support the development of budget papers and then a final decision would be maybe council as part of the budget process. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Trina. Any questions for Trina? Can I get someone then to move their recommendation? Councillor Hogg, councillor Hegedorn, all in favor? Let's carry, thanks, Trina. Item five is councillor remuneration. Director of Financial Services, Day. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Again, this is a report to council, helping with our budget deliberations. The council renumeration based on on your policy and procedure that was passed last year. So we're looking at adjusting council renumeration by three percent. The policy has stated. Either the lower between the twelve percent, twelve-month average CPI. Or the non-union group increase, and right now, as the prior report, we're looking at looking at a non-union group increase of three percent. So with council, that is the same type of adjustments for council's reference that's in the report. The average CPI for the months of December, twelve months from December twenty-two to November twenty-three was four point one percent. The December CPI, just for council's information, was released this week. And it was at. Made that average go down a little bit to three point nine percent, but it's still above the three percent that the non-union group is using. And also in the report is the continuation of the policy to. Reimburse employees and council for their mileage based on the Revenue Canada rates that are in the in the report at sixty four cents. And seventy cents, well, some below five thousand kilometers. I'm happy to answer any questions of council. and 70 cents when it's below 5,000 kilometers. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Day? And I need a mover to receive the report. And, uh, direct staff to prepare an amended council remuneration bylaw for council's consideration for the next regular meeting of council. Uh, to adjust the compensation based on the lesser of the average of CPI, the previous 12 months or the non-union employee increase. Uh, councillor Hogg moves. Councillor Townend seconds, all in favor. Carry. Thank you. Item six, ambulance replacement.
Thank you. And through the warden, this report that's in front of you, uh, provides us with an opportunity to purchase a two replacement ambulances that were scheduled to be replaced during 2024, but with 2023's pricing. So one of the things that we've been doing, uh, in this service, but in many services across Ontario, because the delay in supply of, um, and, and the length of time it takes to build an ambulance at this point is that we've put requests in that are early, um, or than our budget, uh, season, so that we can, uh, capitalize on the, the pricing, um, earlier. So that's what we're doing right now and, uh, uh, we're purchasing this under bylaw 5.3 as a qualified supplier, uh, meaning that, um, it is the Crestline Coach Ambulance, which is the same ambulances that we've purchased here in Letex and Ayton for some time, and, uh, we will, um, uh, recommend that we move forward with that purpose. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adair, and my apologies. I didn't jump in and introduce you. I know we all know who you are, but on the off chance that there's somebody watching online, uh, Michael Dair is our interim chief emergency services. Any questions for, uh, Michael on the ambulance purchase? Uh, yes, councillor Hegedorn.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. Um. With us going into budget deliberations very shortly. Did I understand correctly that the, the, really the big reason for doing a free budget approval is to be able to secure the pricing at last year's price?
That's correct. Yes. So that we can, we, we're anticipating anywhere between a five and a 10% increase of, uh, prices of ambulances. And when I started at the end of last year, I had reached out to Crestline, um, to see if they would honor, uh, uh, the price of 2023 if we, uh, put an order in as soon as possible and explain that we would have to take it to council to, of course, uh, make the purchase and, and they have, uh, they have offered the 2023 pricing if we can, um, um, and that's why I'm going early at this point. So we don't lose that opportunity.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, can I get a mover and second or then that we, uh, proceed, uh, to order the two ambulances? Councillor Davison, councillor Fritsch, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Item seven, micro surfacing contract, uh, director of infrastructure services, Wager.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. Um, staff's looking for a recommendation to, and extend the agreement, uh, with Miller paving for our micro servicing works for 2024. Um, we have wording in the contract, uh, that was awarded in, uh, 2022 that, uh, we can extend for, uh, up to two additional years. They're looking for, uh, 3.1% increase, uh, for the 2024 works. Um, that price has been included in, uh, in the proposed budget to council for the 2024 budget. So if we do go out to tender, uh, we would expect to see the, at least the 3.1% or, uh, or even a higher increase. Um, and I will kind of highlight that, uh, um, when this was issued in 2022, um, uh, we only received one bidder. Um, there are only a few contractors in Ontario that do this work. And, and Miller Paving's the southeastern Ontario contractor. So, um, I wouldn't, if we did go out to tender, I wouldn't expect to see a better price than the 3.1% increase. I'd be happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Any questions for Chris? Can I get a mover and second or then to receive the report and direct staff to extend the agreement with Miller paving councillor Fritsch? Seconded by councillor Calver, all in favor? Carry. Thank you. And Chris, you're up again for the surface treatment contract.
Yes, uh, thank you through you again, Mr. Warden. Uh, this is the exact same thing, except Greenwood Paving's looking to, uh, uh, hold their 2023 pricing for a 0% increase. Um, that rate has been included in the proposed 2024 budget. So, uh, um, and again, it was reviewed with the tax committee and, and a 0% increase, uh, and this economy is great. So, uh, we're looking for, uh, council to direct staff to, to extend that agreement as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? If not, can I get a mover and second or for the motion councillor Hogg, councillor Townend, all in favor? Carry. Thank you. And Chris, on to property stuff, flat roof replacements.
Yes, thank you. Um. This, this, uh, this project was, uh, asked for early tendering, uh, back in, uh, late 2023. Um, again, just to, to get some more, uh, early bidders and then so that, uh, we could carry the actual real numbers, uh, closer to budget. Um, so we, we currently have $135,000, uh, in the proposed budget. Um, in the, sorry, in the proposed 2024 budget. Um, so if, if council awards these contracts, um, we're going to be about 28,000 below the, uh, the proposed budget. And I will highlight in the financial impact, I did make a, a minor mistake. Um, I used, uh, 1.75% uh, HST instead of 1.76. So that value should actually be 106,000, um, $566, uh, not, uh, 55. But happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Thanks, Chris. Any, any questions? Can I get someone to move the recommendation then? Uh, councillor Davison, councillor Calver, all in favor? That's carry. Thank you. And Chris, one more kick at the can, the Boundary Road Agreement with, uh, it's a Tynan De Nagga Township?
That's correct. Thank you. Um, yeah, so like most municipalities, uh, we share services with, uh, with our neighboring municipalities. Um, in this case, uh, they plow the northern portion of County Road 10 and the town of Napanee plows the southern portion on behalf of the county for us. Um, we're essentially just, uh, putting what, uh, with some minor changes, there were some recent minor changes, um, uh, a- approved by, uh, the town of Greater Napanee and, uh, and, and by Tynan De Township, but basically we're putting into writing, um, the agreement that we have, uh, so we're, we're, we're getting rid of that handshake deal and just putting something on paper that confirms who's doing what and the responsibility for what services with Tynan De Township. I'd be happy to answer any questions should council have any.
Any questions? If not, can I get someone to move the recommendation? Uh, councillor Hegedorn, councillor Calver, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Okay, item 11, childcare funding. This is the early years and childcare funding uh, report, uh, by director of social services, Lynn Cheney. Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and my apologies to you and to council, but my camera is not working tonight, so I'm not able to get it on. Uh, the only thing, okay, great. The only thing is I'd like to highlight in this report is that, um, overall, our, um, funding envelope on different envelopes has remained the same with two exceptions. One is, um, there's been an announcement that the, uh, reduction in administration funding from the 10% to the 5% is going to be taking effect for 2024. However, we do have one-time transitional funding, um, remaining that we're able to carry over into the first quarter of 2024. So we will not be impacted in that sense for 2024. However, there will be a pressure in 2025. Uh, the other highlight is that our Seewell funding increased significantly, um, from 4.3 million to 5.9 million. And this is largely due to supporting the directed growth expansion in 2024 as well as additional funds for cost escalation, emerging needs and startup grant funding. And I'd be hap- more than happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Lynn? If not, can I get a, a motion? It says simply to receive the report, councillor Townend. And councillor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Lynn. Advisory committee recommendations and reports, economic development coalition. Report. Anything to add, uh, Chair Davidson? To what we have in front of us? If not, can I get a motion to receive that report? From councillor Hogg and councillor Calver, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Uh, the tax committee report is in front of you. Anything to highlight, Mr. Wager?
No, I don't have anything to highlight or add, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the content of the tax report? If not, can I get a motion to receive that report? Councillor Fritsch, councillor Townend, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Emergency Services Advisory Committee. Anything to, uh, add to that report? Any questions on that report? Can I get a motion to receive that report? Councillor Hogg, councillor Hegedorn, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. John M. Parrot Centre Compliance Report. Angela, anything to highlight in this report?
Yes, I would like to do that, please. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I will walk you through the, um, the occupancy rates. It's really important to note, um, the incredible total of people that moved into the Parrot Centre in 2023. This is a new record for us. Um, historically, over the past previous four years, we averaged 73, uh, admissions in a year. And this past year, we saw 100 people. Um, so pretty staggering numbers. And this is, this results in an incredible amount of work by all staff in all departments. So right from the packing up of a discharge to the, to the bringing in, uh, the painting of the room, the, the upkeep, the cleaning, um, and then the setup of an entirely new room. That inclusive of all of the admission paperwork that goes along with that, getting to know the resident, um, ensuring smooth transitions are occurring. Um, getting to know families, families getting to know us. Um, it's, it's a significant, significant workload, um, across all the departments. There's a, a, uh, an awful lot of assessments that come with every new admission from a dietary perspective to a nursing perspective. Um, there's significant financial, um, discussions that occur that are very lengthy. Um, so having 100 admissions is, um, uh, pretty unreal, um, in our sector for that increase. Um, we've also seen, of course, the length of stay has also decreased, um, significantly just in one year. Um, so we are, we typically run um, around, uh, the 800, um, days mark for an admission for a, a resident residing at the Parrot Centre. And in last year, we were at 592 days. So a significant reduction as well, which speaks to the, um, length of time that people are, are staying at home, being cared for at home. Um, but then the, the um, advanced disease process of the new admissions that we're seeing and therefore then um, not staying with us for a significant period of time. A dietary staffing has, um, been incredibly staff, incredibly challenging, um, just recently. Um, I would say in the last, uh, three months of, uh, 2023, we did reach out to agencies without success prior to Christmas. Um, this resulted in, um, a significant draw on, um, both the unionized staff and the management in order to cover the vacancies, um, that resulted in that department. Um, we have been able to secure a couple of, um, staff from a, from an agency to support us in the interim for dietary, um, and hopefully with some recent hires, we'll be able to, um, stop that agency use in the dietary department. Um, but we are continuing to use them for RPN utilization. Um, as far, as far as quality goes, you can see the indicators that are outlined there. Um, we believe that the has fallen indicator that is now in red and had been in green for a number of months is as a direct result of our, um, increase in admissions. We're seeing, um, that we're not having the full, um, a- all of the information that's required to ensure that, um, residents are being set up for success. And so we are getting that delayed and so we're not perhaps, um, uh, ensuring that all of the interventions are in place that should be and residents are falling within, um, the early stages of their transition into the home. Um, Dr. Robichaud is, uh, really helping us there with, uh, in terms of his, uh, connections with the hospitals. So, um, that is helping to support the timely need for reports that we require. Um, moving forward, you will see that we, um, had our very first, um, full compliance inspection, um, for a period of seven days in November. This is called a proactive compliance inspection and they inspect every, um, every program that's occurring within the home. It's very, very in-depth. There are two, two compliance inspectors, um, that are present for the entire duration. Um, it's, it's, um, very, very comprehensive. Um, as a result, they hadn't, um, they found two, um, uh, policies that should have been on a board, posted on a board, were on a bo- were on the board, but, um, for some reason, were not. When, um, the inspector looked, uh, we immediately corrected that, um, when it was pointed out to us um, within minutes. And, um, as a result, it becomes a non-compliance remedied. Um, so all in all, it represents a considerably, considerably impressive, um, outcome, given the vast amount of, um, programs that were being evaluated. And it really speaks to all of the staff, um, doing an incredible effort um, towards keeping in compliance with fixing long-term care act. Uh, in terms of infections, um, we continue to wear masks at all times. Um, the, uh, flu shot, uh, rate for staff is now, it's listed there at 74%. It, I can tell you it is now at 80%. This is, um, we're actually setting quite a good trend, um, across other healthcare sectors where we are, um, really actually high relative to other sectors for our flu shot compliance. So we're really happy about that. Um, so that is good. We had a total of 15 outbreaks, um, in 2023. Um, that were all relatively short-lived, which is a testament to, um, the housekeeping and nursing and all staff really working really well together and doing all of the necessary IPAC procedures. Um, you can see under health and safety that we conducted our annual vulnerable occupancy drill, um, with the fire department. Um, this went on, on December 8th and you can see that we completed this, um, with great success. It went very smoothly. The fire department was very impressed with the, um, collaboration of the staff. And we also did a, um, required boiled watery, water advisory tabletop exercise. Um, and we updated some policies as a result of that. These are required, um, exercises that we have to do on an annual basis. So, um, those are done. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions or comments on Angela's report? Did you have to go in and do some cooking, Angela?
I did have to cook. Um, I've cooked now three times. Yep.
That really speaks to a serious staff shortage when the draft was in. Were you making?
My husband would agree with you, I have to say. Very serious.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, can I get a motion to receive, uh, the report, please? Uh, councillor Townend, councillor Calver, all in favor? That's carried. Thanks, Angela. Uh, any committee reports by members of council? Seeing none. I'll move on to the county department activity reports, starting with administration. Brenda.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have. I'll just highlight that we've been very busy doing budget and preparing your budget documents for next month and also doing action planning on our employee engagement survey.
Any questions for Brenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to financial services, Mr. Day.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Um, the one thing I would like to highlight in the report is Cynthia Davey, our provincial offenses trial coordinator has announced her retirement for February 23. Trial Coordinator has announced her retirement for February twenty-third. Uh, Cynthia has been with the county since nineteen ninety-nine, when we took over uh, the Provincial Offenses Act Administration and Court Proceedings, and. I would just like to uh, acknowledge her uh, with council and, and. And really um, hope that she enjoys her next stage of life, and she'll be greatly missed. Her experience and customer service has been second to none. Uh, for her dealing with some irate people, it's uh, never been an issue, so just wanted to um. Announce that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for Mr. Day? Just have one, Mark. Is uh, impact actually going to do a, a assessment of properties in twenty twenty-four?
That, it has not been announced a, as of yet, so as, as soon as I do find out, um. I'll let you know, but for two thousand and twenty-four, the assessment is based on the old two thousand and sixteen assessment, same as last year. So any changes will be any growth or any new builds or changes to properties, so. But uh, there's been no announcement yet as to when um, they're gonna do a market evaluation.
When they're actually gonna do their job.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Day. Social Services, uh, Ms. Cheney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, I have nothing to add to my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for Lynn? Okay, Community and Development Services, Stephen.
Uh, the report uh, provides a bit of an overview of kind of the, the year at a glance for the, the libraries and the museum in particular. I guess I do want to highlight that, you know, seven thousand people visited the museum this past year, which numbers are, are way up from the last two years and. Comparable now to back twenty nineteen, and, and this year was a record-breaking year in our libraries, so we had two hundred and, almost two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Um, items checked out uh, throughout the year, so that's a, a new record, and again exceeds our twenty nineteen numbers, so. Thanks to staff in, in both those locations for all they've done to uh, get us not only back to numbers pre-COVID, but exceeding that, so it's a. It's a job well done, and they should be very proud of that.
Indeed, it's impressive. Any questions for Stephen? Moving on to Long-Term Care Services, Angela.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Warden. Uh, I just want to highlight the annual Resident Family Satisfaction Survey. You can see the results there that I've highlighted. Um, uh, I will say that the family satisfaction survey, it uh, had. Two areas um, that were under the eighty percent um, mark. One is around um, their belief that resi, so they do a separate survey, then the residents do a survey, so. The families feel that the resident uh, or the recreational programs um, aren't meeting the resident needs, and that came in at sixty-three percent. If we compare that question, though, to the residents, the residents um, range in that question. Uh, notion between eighty-nine and ninety-five percent satisfaction, so um. The, the people that are wanting the service, receiving the service, are satisfied with the service. Um, and then the other one for families is the satisfaction with the physiotherapy services is at sixty-nine percent for families. Yet residents are rating them at eighty-six percent, so again, a little bit of um. A difference. We do, we have two areas that um, uh, fell under the eighty percent um, average for residents. And that is under um. Uh, residents wanting to ensure their personal privacy is maintained. Um, it came in at eighty percent, which is a significant drop. It was historically around in the uh, mid-nineties. So we're gonna do some digging as to why uh, residents feel that. So that we can better understand uh, where they're coming from, and the other one is around time I prefer to get up, came in at seventy-eight percent, so that will. Um, I, I think that that will be um. Uh. Enhanced when we consider the twenty twenty-four budget with the four hours of care. Um, enhancements to the nursing department, and I think that that will resolve itself. Um, I would highlight or really encourage um, you to, to review the annual medical director's report. Dr. Robichaud has. Um, provided an excellent overview of twenty twenty-three and has really highlighted some amazing programs and some. Um, some initiatives that uh, to come in twenty twenty-four, and other than that, I'd be happy to uh, take any questions.
Any questions for Angela? Seeing none, we'll move on to Emergency Services, Michael.
Ah. Sorry, my button wasn't working for a second, or maybe I was um, through the warden. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. Um, this is our report for uh, this month in terms of our. Update for paramedic services, emergency services. And in here, uh, we talk a little bit about the Loyalist Ambulance Station in terms of the work that we're doing to locate the. Ultimate best uh, location for um, uh, building a new base. And so there will be more on this to come, and we'll present that to council once a decision is made, and. We've been actively working on that with both our GIS and Navy Health Services. Um, our new collective agreement, we continue to implement, and a couple of things, uh. Labor relation, from a labor relations perspective, we have started our Labor Relations Committee meeting again in our Quality and Education Committee meeting, which will help. Us to inform uh, changes in the future of paramedic services and some of the work that we're gonna be doing over the next couple of years. Um, and then uh. I guess um, over to the statistics, um. If you want to uh, look at those, um, so we have here for the twenty twenty-three call volumes, uh, we talk about. Uh, the monthly by municipality and by month, which has been the typical way that we presented data to this uh, municipality in the past. And then we represent, or then we also included offload delays as well as the response time performance standards. And uh, one of the things that you'll see that's new is that we've added definitions of the data so that um, council can, or anyone in the public. Have opportunity to read how we defined the numbers that we're uh, seeking, and in the future. You can expect some changes to uh, this data as we continue to onboard, uh, first watch a data analytical. Uh, business tool as well. So I'm happy to ask, are any questions that council may have, and I'll pass the microphone back over.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael on Emergency Services at this time? Nothing. Uh, Human Resources, Ms. McGarvey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't have anything to add, but I would want to highlight uh, the turnover data that we provided in the report, so. Um, council had expressed some interest in uh, the turnover data at a recent council meeting, so I have put together. Um, some information, some um, graphics to just illustrate. Um, our state of nation, I guess you could call it. Um, I'm happy to um. Uh, see any feedback that you may have, different ways you'd like to see the data, or different types of data you'd like to see. This was just kind of my. My first kick at the can, and um, suggesting that this is something we participate in, in a, in a benchmarking survey. It's released every late fall. And that we bring this back to council on an annual basis, um, but certainly we could bring our own data back. Uh, more frequently. It's just that the external comparator data is just released once a year for the prior year, so.
Okay, that, it is interesting data. Any questions for Trina? Yes, Counselor Fritsch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, Trina, yeah, first of all, I find the, the report I find is extremely interesting, and thank you. Um, it looks like. At least my view is, this is what actually is somewhat of a tool that will. Help, I guess, look at areas where. We can improve retention, like some turnover obviously is normal and healthy in an organization. But even if you impacted one percent of that turnover. Uh. Through whatever actions were taken, you know, at the time of hiring or screening, or, or after they're hired and, and the orientation and coaching when they're here. The first couple of years in particular. Yeah, it's uh, yeah, do you, do you, do you find it a, a useful tool? I guess that's my question. Do, do you see this as? As something that will be of uh, benefit to you in, in, and all the department heads in, in how they. I guess, manage the hiring process and the coaching, et cetera.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, absolutely. I think that um, this is, this is one data point for us, and we have other data points, but it did. Um, highlight for us that we knew we were losing people that were only with us usually less than a year, so what we did is once we, we. We implemented like a new hire survey, we asked people about how did you find the selection process, how applying for the job, you're onboarding. Your first three months, and what, what, what could we have done to make that better? And from that, we've developed some programs and initiatives and strategies that have really. Um, um, hopefully, uh, you know, we're starting to get some traction. It's making a difference. Um, and we also have things like exit interviews that people can provide feedback and engagement surveys, and all of those things will inform. Um, our steps, and we can slice and dice the data in various different ways to kind of figure out where we might want to focus our energies as well, so. Absolutely find it helpful and happy to share.
Great. May I ask a follow-up question?
Of course, go ahead.
So Trina, ju, just a question, I care, it was maybe a definition here, I guess, I'm assuming deemed resigned means you just disappeared with. Is that what it means? I don't know.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Deemed resigned means that, yes, we didn't get a formal letter of resignation, but someone perhaps, a, a lot of what we see is people that just. Um, stop responding to call-ins. They haven't met their minimum availability, so that, that, you know, they have to be available for X number of shifts over a period of time. And when they fail to do so, we'll reach out to them. They may not respond, and then we just deem them resigned, even though we didn't get a formal resignation. Yes.
Thank you.
I did that once when I was eighteen, working for Weston's Bakery. I was so sick of that place, I just didn't show up. Okay, thank you, Trina. Uh, final activity report is Infrastructure Services, Chris.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, through you, uh, I just want to highlight the uh, the asset management launch uh, of City Works. Um, it, it seems like this project has been about four years in the making, from the discussions at TAC and with the lower tiers. To the issuing the RFP, to uh. Um, award the RFP and working with Esri Building at Breach Municipality, but it's been finally launched. I, I just want to highlight uh, our GIS staff. Especially Matt Mulder and his uh, um, exhausted efforts over the past uh, three or four years and. And, and getting us as far as we are with uh, OREG five eighty-eight seventeen. Um, where we've met all requirements, and at this. Point in the game, we're, we're about a year ahead of the uh, uh, the minimum requirements for that regulation, and I just want to thank our GIS staff for that. Happy to answer any questions your council have any.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Can I get a motion to receive all the uh, County Department Activity Reports, please? Counselor Richardson, Counselor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, we have several resolutions here. Number one uh, is uh, from Orangeville, Ontario Works Rates. Any motion on that one? They want the province to double the Ontario Works Rates. Someone want to move receipt, or what's your wishes here? Counselor Hegedorn, Counselor Richardson, moving receipt? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Number two, Amendment to Legislation Act. Uh, but a town of Bracebridge, this one's basically saying they can't publish their announcements in a newspaper because they've lost their print newspaper. Wishing the province to uh, allow publication digitally. What's your wishes on this one? Yep. Counselor Fritsch?
And receive and support it.
Receive and support. Counselor Davidson, you're seconding that? All in favor? It's carried. Yes, that's an interesting one. Seventy papers have disappeared in terms of actual print. I forget the company. Uh, three Occupational Health and Safety Act Amendment. This is the one where Sudbury was sued for a workplace accident that they had no uh, supervisory function on. What's your wishes on this one? Uh, Counselor Fritsch?
Receive and reso, support.
I have a seconder for that. Counselor Calver, all in favor? That's carried. Yes, that's a big one. Community Safety from Aurora. I can't remember what this one is, sorry. Can I get a motion to receive? Counselor Hogg and Counselor Townend, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, here's one we can all relate to from township of Ashford Del Norwood on rising insurance costs. What's your wishes on this one? Counselor Calver? You're muted.
Uh, yeah, receive and support.
Okay, do I get a second? Counselor Davidson, you're support that? Resolution, that motion, all in favor? Receive and support. Social and Economic Prosperity from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Sit down with the province and really get serious about these issues. Can I get a motion on this one? Counselor Calver?
Uh, to uh, receive and support.
You get a second for that. Counselor Fritsch, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Final one is a Skills Development Fund. Uh, from the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors to set up training program for municipal equipment operators. I have a motion for that. Counselor Hegedorn?
Receive and support.
Seconder, please. Counselor Hogg, all in favor? Good, thank you. That's carried. Matters for Information, University Hospitals Foundation of Kingston, a thank you letter. Uh, can I get a motion to receive that? From Counselor Hogg and Counselor Hegedorn, all in favor? That's carried. There's information available on request. Can I get a motion to receive that information? Counselor Fritsch and Counselor Calver, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Other business, statements from members. Counselor Townend.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Um, I just have uh, an update for council. As council will be aware, um. I'm currently a member of the Southeast Tribe Board Merger Committee, a committee of uh, members from uh, KFLNA. Leeds Granville Lanark and Hastings Prince Edward Public Health Boards. Um, and which is currently developing a business case for the voluntary merger of. Those three boards as a response to the provincial government's mandate to strengthen public health. Uh, the business case is due to the province by April first. And as colleagues can imagine, this has meant a rapid and intense discussion process with several meetings per month between now and April. Uh, I have been appointed to a communications subcommittee within the tribe board. Uh, and I anticipate the development of more concrete talking points around these issue, issues for council's information. Uh, in the near future, uh, because of the sensitive nature of these discussions. Uh, in order to avoid confusion and potential misunderstanding, uh, the merger committee has agreed to develop communications jointly. Uh, hence the creation of the subcommittee. All this is to say, uh, that I anticipate being able to bring more information uh, to council around these issues uh, in the very near future.
Thank you, Counselor Townend. Anyone else with a statement this time? I'll be very interested to hear the outcome of those discussions. You've taken on a big one there, Nathan. Uh, any notices of motion? Any matters of urgency? If nothing further, I need a motion to confirm the proceedings of the meeting. Counselor Hogg, Counselor Richardson, all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn. Counselor Calver, Counselor Hegedorn, all in favor?